Look at that.
I have.
I heard I haven't. All right, um, I'm not getting any response. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, good. Can I? Have all of you had a chance to look at the minutes from last month?
Yes.
No.
All right. Does anybody have any modifications or corrections to those minutes? Seeing that there are no changes, I did not find anything. Can I get a motion from the commission to approve the minutes from last month?
I'll set forth the motion to approve the meetings from last month.
Thank you, Deborah. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, the minutes have been approved from last month. Thank you very much. Um, okay, second item on the agenda is public comment. We always break public comment into two sections. If you are joining us here today, welcome. And if you are here wanting to listen in, to speak to any of the issues that are on the new new business agenda, we'll invite you to talk later. But if you have any other zoning related issues related to Livingston that are not specifically addressing the recommendations for zoning map changes, you can talk now. Is there anyone who would like to say anything right now? Stacy Jovic, please. Can you unmute yourself?
I just wanted to say I'm Stacy Jovic, 410 South 8 Livingston. And I just wanted to encourage the zoning board to keep up the good work. And I know that with Matthew having left, that there will be a void for a while, but to keep moving forward and zoning deliberation. That's all.
All right, I appreciate that, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say about any sort of general zoning issues? Jane, please.
Yes. I guess my concern is the one about the North Side School District situation.
Okay, Jane, excuse me, Jane. We are asking for those comments to be held until later in the meeting when that topic is. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, well then, if there are no further public comments, it looks like we have no business, old business to take care of. Let's now transition into new business. We have two, four, six, seven items on new business. Most of them are recommendations for zoning map amendments. And then at the very tail of the end of it, we have a design review overlay topic that keeps getting kicked down the road. So I don't like just read the list of the topics that we're going to be covering today. The first one is a zone map amendment for the KPRK area. We discussed this last month and we decided to postpone the decision until this month. So I would like to take that topic up first. Just because we've had it on our plate for a while. Second on the list is the Myers Landing zoning map amendment. And this is a parcel that has been annexed into the city, which is basically across the river from the dog park. Number three is 72 North 8th Street and 72 North 9th Streets zoning map amendment. This is a parcel or two parcels that are up close to the Livingston School District. And they've been included and they've been annexed into the city. So we need to designate some kind of zoning on that property. The next, number four would be the Livingston School District zoning map amendment. And this is the large 20 acre parcel up on the North Side over by the Armory. Following that, we have an area between the railroad tracks and Gallatin Street that is sort of railroad property that has been included in the city. And then we have these last two topics, which are design regulation zoning text amendments, which has to do with signs in the downtown historic district. And then the last thing on the agenda was the design review overlay zone. So what I thought we would do is take care of the KPRK issue first because we've already discussed it. And then if we got that out of the way, I'm assuming the majority of the people that are visiting and with us today are here because of the Livingston School District zoning map amendment. Is that correct? Is there anyone here that would like to address any of the other annexed parcels? Uh, okay, we have Josh Ben and you're from the KPRK area and Stacy Jovic. Stacy, what would you like to address? Stacy, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, um, for the recommendation for the 72 North 8th Street, what was the recommendation for that?
The staff recommendation was for R2.
Okay. Um, that's, that's all I needed to know on that really. And, and I have one other.
Yes.
Um, I do have property within the mixed use over on Gallatin Street. And I was just wondering what the definition of the mixed use was because I couldn't find an actual definition for mixed use.
Um, we can certainly read that at some point here. I have the materials in front of me. Um, and they are available if you go to the city's website and go to zoning documents, you can find it there too.
I couldn't find it. Then I'm not really savvy on the, on the city website, so.
I'll help you out. So I think what we should do maybe just in terms of, so everybody doesn't have to, excuse me, Mr. Benton? Did you have something to say?
I did. I was, I didn't realize that Matthew had left. And so I had sent him an email to forward to you guys and I don't know if you got it.
I have not seen it.
So about two weeks ago or so, I sent an email to explaining a little bit more about my position on the zoning that you're going to talk about on the first topic. And so not, I, I, I thought, I asked him to distribute that to the five members and not knowing that he was gone, obviously that did not happen.
Okay.
We received an email dated January 31st. Is that the one or you sent one out?
This, this would have been that last week of February.
Okay.
Maybe it's February 24th or 5th or something of that nature.
Well, Mr. Benton, the first topic on our list is, is the KPRK area.
Right. And you were, you were wondering if anybody was, wanted to speak about anything other than the school property. So that's why I was bringing that to your attention.
Thank you. So I think we'll start then with the KPRK area zoning map amendment. And then after that, we'll go to the school property. And because so many of you are here concerned with that issue, rather than having all of you waiting around until eight o'clock at night, we'll, we'll try to, we'll try to deal with that as soon as we can. So let's start with the KPRK area. Mike Cardos, are you performing Michael or Matthew's duties here representing the staff in terms of the staff report or?
Such as a maybe, yes.
Would you like to make a presentation then from the, from the planning, planning department about that proposal?
Absolutely. So the, I'm gonna see if I can actually share the the screen with you, although it doesn't seem to want to pick up on the Word document that's up there. In general though, this is the one that you have already looked at. Matthew's already presented this staff to you. It was the one that is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, which you guys zoned it after it was annexed. Then the staff recommended at that time that we would look at it again when it became, when the mixed use zoning criteria became available. Once it did, this was brought back in front of you. And then in the last meeting, you had some conversations about whether you wanted to go with the mixed use or the original staff recommendation, which was highway commercial. And so you continued it on to this meeting and you can pick up your conversation where you were. And I will see if I can figure out why the word won't share, but I will bring up a map when I can.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, just for some additional background on this, on the staff report from February 1st, part of this says that at the time of zoning, the city commission agreed that the area would be rezoned mixed use when that new zoning designation was adopted to ensure the existing home in the area would not be non-conforming. City staff is now moving forward with the zoning update to rezone the partial as mixed use as stated as the goal of the commission. This zoning amendment does not remove the design review overlay designation or the area previously zoned R2. Um, so that's kind of the background from the city commission on the matter. Um, Mr. Benton, do you have a copy of the letter you sent out this in the last couple of weeks? Could you possibly read that?
Um, I'll, I Julie will get it off the other computer and then make a printing of it. I don't have it. I'm just on a little iPad here, so I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Do you have any comments? You know, you came and presented to us last month. And I'm just wondering in the interim whether you.
Well, basically what I was reiterating was the fact that I, I still hold that it should be highway commercial. And some, some of the issues about whether it would be a, an auto repair garage or things like that, that ground down there has such a high water table that it's severely restricted by DEQ. And anything of that nature or any building of any nature would have to have DEQ approval before any construction could take place down there. And so I just was trying to alleviate some concerns about the sorts of things that could go in on, on my property down there, or if I were to sell it in the future or somebody else's plans. Julie gave me it. It says, I would like my parcel of land to be zoned highway commercial because of the way this was handled last November. Me not being advised of the planned meeting for RC zoning. I feel that the landowners being affected should have a say. I appreciated Matt notifying me of the last meeting. As I stated before, the elimination of potential services allowed for that east end of town not only affects me financially, but could have adverse effects on Livingston's future growth. Remember, my property can only be used for certain commercial means just because of the proximity of the river, plus it would need DEQ approval. When, not if, the land on the east side of the river across from the hospital becomes full of houses and other living areas, they will need places to get gas, food, household items. As it is now, anyone going east for travel either has to backtrack a mile or two for the last minute items or stop in Big Timber. This highway commercial designation would eliminate any problems for the future church as it stands now. New business would actually look nice as people enter Livingston. Look how impressive the hospital looks as you come into town. One last point, I don't understand the philosophy of the city of Livingston. It seems so tyrannical, the way they are swallowing up land with annexation with less than 10% approval from property owners. Making my land highway commercial not only makes sense as to the fact highway commercial should extend down to the 89 corridor to the East interchange, but why not actually listen to what landowners wants for a change? It is not asking that much to make it highway commercial. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benton. Um, are there any other comments from the public concerning this issue? All right, um.
Jim, I was wanting to make a comment, please.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I just, so I just wanted to understand 111 North C Street. I was just wanting to understand, was this proposal for neighborhood commercial or for mixed use?
It's for mixed use.
Okay. I just wanted to say I support that designation or any designation with the housing because I think that's a really good use potentially for that area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, Stacy Jovic, do you have a comment?
I just still would like a definition of mixed use, please.
Okay, this would be inappropriate. I have it right here. I'll read actually both highway commercial, the definition of that and of mixed use. So in the Livingston zoning document, highway commercial is defined as a district intended to provide areas for residential structures, commercial and service enterprises which serve the needs of the tourist, traveler, recreationalist, or the general traveling public. Areas designated as highway commercial should be located in the vicinity of freeway interchanges, intersections of limited access highways, or adjacent to primary and secondary highways. And the definition of mixed use is a district intended to accommodate a mix of residential and neighborhood scale, commercial services, and offices. So there, I mean, just in terms of that basic definition, I guess I would say that the intent is quite different. One of them is intended to serve the travelers. And the other one is more of a residential neighbor, neighborhood where we're trying to integrate some commercial services and offices into residential areas. So that's, that's the choice that's, that's before us. Um, the second thing I might read for you, and I think this relates to some of the topics we'll talk about a little later, but if we compare the allowed uses in each, in the zoning categories, I'll just read down the list here. So in terms of mixed use versus highway commercial. So in both of these designations, you can build any kind of houses you want from single family up to apartment buildings. In the mixed use, churches would need a special permit as would any trade tools. Pinnels and catteries would not be allowed in mixed use. Motels and hotels would not be allowed in mixed use. Nor would travel trailer parks. Large scale retail would not be allowed. Drive-in restaurants would not be allowed. Wholesale businesses would not be allowed. Uh, gas stations would not be allowed. Auto repair, auto dealerships, auto salvage would not be allowed. So is there anything else here? Warehouses would not be allowed, nor machine shops. So I think the intent there is to, you know, if we choose mixed use, the intent there is to not consider it as, you know, a service area for, for automobiles and for the traveling public. Are there any other sort of ideas or questions? Anyone would have?
This is Rich Crossland. I would, I guess I agree with Mr. Benton. It seems like the the current property owner should be consulted on this. I mean, I'm not, I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but I, it's, I mean, where that is out there, it seems like the, you know, highway commercial makes sense. It is a highway. So, you know, but I think that the property owner should be consulted on that.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. I think the intent, going back to the growth policy, was part of that was, is that that end of town is among other things, a food desert. And, you know, just really doesn't have, it's a long ways away from any sort of commercial services or offices or, or stores, you know, except for the coffee shop. There's really nothing out there that people that who live out there could use. So the idea was that we would try to make as much as possible that end of town more amenable to the residential area. I think that, that kind of goes back to the growth policy. All right, can we have?
Hey, Jim.
Comments from the commission?
Tom Blue Rock has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I, when I first read the mixed use zoning designation and I was a little concerned that it sort of, it allows some really dense commercial, or either housing or commercial or, you know, I think, I think it has a very high height limit. It has almost no setbacks. It would, it would allow very, very dense development, which can, you know, if used judiciously can be a really good thing. But I think because of its potential density, it should be used very carefully. You know, I heard, if you sort of read that on the surface or read the growth policy, the growth policy sort of implies, you know, a medium density sort of mixed neighborhood, which I, I'm not sure that the, that the designation is written really, really applies to. I think in infill development, and I think this is kind of a tweener, it would, it would be useful. But it would allow like for four or five story buildings. Now, do we really want to allow that sort of thing? Or should we really think about what that mixed use district really is? I, I was kind of alarmed at how dense it allowed things. Not that it would happen that way, but to allow it is, is to say that it could happen.
Right. And actually, with either choice between highway commercial and mixed use, you are allowed equal amount of density.
Yeah, I think you might have gone a little overboard in sort of the density allowable. And because of that, it, you know, it, it maybe needs, needs a little more judicious management and how, where you put it, you know? There's a lot of, there's a lot of places that could use a lot of density, but I'm not sure you'd like it sort of in areas that are adjacent to open space and, and some of the, some of the entries into the cities or some, some of the places where it, where it's implied that it could be used. And I think there is a discrepancy between the definition and the growth policy and the way it turned out in the zoning ordinance.
For mixed use, you mean?
For mixed use. I think the mixed use allows sort of a denser, a dense, a denser development that is implied in the, in the, in the, in the growth policy language.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's a general comment, but it applies here because you're talking about mixed use. I would, I would really be careful where you use that because of that density allowance. Not, and I think, I think in this particular case, because of its adjacency to the river, because it's in the, yeah, and, and the flood plains and that sort of thing, we probably naturally sort of moderate what you could do there. But in other places, that's kind of a general comment. You'll probably hear from me more than once.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Can I get your address, Tom?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 110 and a half South Main Street.
Thank you.
I live downtown.
All right. Any further comments? From the public or from the zoning commission?
Just.
Stacy, yes?
Um, just in general, in reference to the growth policy, because this was land that was in the outside of the city, we did not designate it with a designation because it was county property. Just to clarify.
Wouldn't it have been in the ETJ?
Um, yeah, you're right. We probably would have fallen into the ETJ. True.
All right. Any further questions? Any comments from the commission? Oh, boy. All right. Well, I think the next step is to have a motion. Which way are people leaning? I, I, I could go back. There was some expectation from the city commission that this would end up as mixed use, but we certainly, we certainly can do whatever we want. The housing issue would be the same. The same amount of housing or types of housing could be put in there with either designation. It's more a question of what types of commercial businesses could, could go in the, in this.
I myself am leaning towards mixed use just for the maximum flexibility. And though I understand Tom's comments about the height and the idea of that type of density being down there, I think he's correct that in that particular area, we probably wouldn't see that level of density that he's concerned about. But for the town growth and the residents that are there, to me, it seems more sense to offer them amenities and further develop the neighborhood rather than, um, you know, making decisions that are for the good of those on the I-90.
All right, thank you, Deborah. Anyone else have comments?
I would probably say the same. I, I understand Chris where you're coming from and truly empathize with that position. And I, I, I think I, I am supportive of mixed use. And I, I, I think I, I am supportive of mixed use, but I don't want that to seem as though I'm dismissive of, of your concerns because I do understand them. And I tend to agree with Tom as well, but I do think that area is going to be limited by floodplain issues. So.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Ben?
I, I just, excuse me, I just wanted to make, make that last point about the church. If it ends up mixed use, remember that that's a special permit they will have to get. If it's, if it stays in the highway or, well, remember the last time we talked about highway commercial and residential commercial or whatever that other, the current designation is, they, they wouldn't need a permit or a special permit from zoning or the city or whoever would grant that. But if it goes to mixed use, there again, that would have, the church would have to ask for permission to do that. And there's always turnover and city, city boards and, and zoning boards and things like that. And so you don't know what the future will hold. And I don't, I don't have a dog in that fight because I've already sold that property to them, but I just wanted to bring it up again.
I appreciate that. All right. Anything else? Well, any further discussion? Can I get a motion?
I'll set forth the motion for zoning O Street to the Yellowstone River K Park area, mixed use zoning.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Say aye.
Just for the record, Michael Chellis, did you, did you say aye to support?
I did say aye, yeah.
Okay. You're a little bit late. Thank you. So that motion passes. And it will be sent on as a recommendation to the city commission. Thank you, everyone, for your discussion. All right. Well, let's switch up the order of business here a little bit and take up the Livingston School District zoning map amendment as our next order of business. This is this is the big one for the night, I think. I'll feel good when we're, when we're, we work our way through this. All right. So this is a zoning map amendment for the scenic drive school district property. The city has annexed the property and the staff has issued a report, which those of the commission members have received. Michael Cardos, would you like to make a report from the staff?
I would love to. Let me share the map again so people can see what we're looking at. So again, this, this is to zone for the first time of the school property, which you can see there inside the light magenta outline. It was annexed back in September by the city commission. So now it needs to be zoned. So this is not a rezoning. This is an initial zoning. The, this is a one owner parcel of about 20 acres belongs to the school district. The school district did make a request that this be zoned R3. If you look at Matthew's staff report, in this case, it notes that most of the adjoining properties are zoned R2. There is some R3 to the southwest and to the east within a few blocks, but most of it is, is zoned R2 immediately around the area that include North Town. If you look at the ETJ Flum, the future land use map, it is listed as pastoral open space. Again, many of the areas in the county were broad brush pastoral open space and there is not a city zoning that maintains it as such. So it will have to be zoned according to the city zoning standards. It does show the areas as either, the adjacent areas as either medium density residential or parks and recreation. As far as the growth policy goes, Matthew has noted several of the strategies here to include, to allow for higher densities, R3 designation does allow for some of the highest densities in the city. Which may not, the density that surrounding areas may not be able to support. In this case, specifically the Fifth Street Crossing. The proposed R3 zoning does allow more uses than R2, specifically multifamily development, which is not allowable in R2. There are no infrastructure issues as far as water and sewer go. And there are multiple entrances for streets to all sides of the development, if there were to be one, but the Fifth Street Crossing is still the pinch point in this particular case. It is consistent with the growth policy as far as limiting urban sprawl and using infill development. It does encourage development near transit routes, specifically Wind Rider does have a stop there at the soccer field. So they do have some alternative transportation. It does promote a mix of housing within the neighborhoods. Denser multi-unit buildings can help prevent or can help promote affordable housing. The condos and apartment buildings can support a variety of age groups. As far as education needs go, the, since this is a school property, it could allow for employee housing, which would help with the school district and give the school district the most flexibility in the future as they move forward. The proposed R3 zoning could accommodate up to a maximum of about 747 dwelling units, depending on how it would be developed. This would have impact on traffic flow to the north side, again, especially the district crossing. The, as we, as you look to zone this or to make a recommendation on this zoning, you do need to evaluate the potential for the amount of traffic that could be generated depending on the type of development that went in there. And other than that, Matthew's staff comments, he does say that the proposed zoning is inconsistent with the surrounding areas. Although it is residential in nature and is similar to all the adjacent, adjacent areas as far as the use goes. The proposed map amendment would have no effect on property values according to standards. And the residential use, use of land is appropriate for that area. The proposed use is significantly different from the prevailing use in the area. Although this is a larger piece, it's not a small piece and the change from R2 to R3 could could benefit the entire community as we look for more affordable housing. So Matthew's recommendation was that the zoning commission will need to evaluate and the city commission after them, if they believe that the crossing at Fifth Street is too much of an impediment for this development or if that could be mitigated as development occurred using funds from the developers' impact fees or other methods. If you believe this can be mitigated, then Matthew's recommendation was to approve the request is R3. And if not, the zoning could be, be left at R2. The only additional, I'll, I'll put in other than what Matthew had in his report is the other appropriate zoning of this area is public. Because it is school district property, it could still be zoned public. The school is not beholden to zoning. They could build whatever they wanted while they owned it. And then if sold, it would need to be rezoned by a developer or whoever purchased the property. So those are probably the three most appropriate zoning choices, either R3, R2, or public, depending on how the zoning commission would like to go forward.
Thank you, Michael. So I think just in terms of order of business here, the way I'd like to proceed is first, if there's any questions or questions from the zoning commission, Michael Cardos, technical issues, clarifications, let's do that first. Then I know that we have a representative from the school district here and I would like him to make a presentation and be available for questions. And then after that, I would like to open it up to the, to the public for their comments. And then following that, we'll have a, a board discussion and, and a vote. So is there anyone on the zoning commission that has any questions from the planning department?
I have a few questions. I'd like to know why the school proposed R3. I'd also like to know what are the max number of units for R2? I'd also like to know, I'm assuming regardless of zoning, this piece will have to go through subdivision process. So any unit would have to pay an impact fee. So just to clarify, clarification on that. And then just a general comment that I would say the ship has sailed in this community for affordable housing. So I don't know if we can make an argument of going higher density will provide affordable housing. I don't actually agree with that. So just a general comment from me, but those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else from the zoning commission? All right. I'd like to say a couple of things myself. Just in terms of transparency, I got a call from Lynn Scalia, who's the superintendent of schools this morning, and she asked me to come to a meeting to discuss this issue because Matthew Monard is no longer available. And they just needed some clarification. And so I went to a meeting at their offices this morning at 10 o'clock and my intent in at that meeting was to to just provide technical, impactful information to them in terms of zoning regulations and process. I told him my, my intent was not, you know, my job is not to tip the scale. I, you know, certainly haven't made up my mind on any of this. But I did go to that meeting. So I think I'll leave it go at that. And now could we possibly have?
Excuse me, Jim. I, I do have a question. Sorry. I had muted myself. I was hoping that Michael Cardos, you could speak to the current status of the Fifth Street Crossing and just where the city is with its thinking and implementation in that. Thank you.
Michael, do you have any thoughts?
Sure. I'll probably let the school speak to why they want R3. In general, though, it gives them more flexibility. They can do more with the property if it's zoned R3. As far as the number of units, if everything was broken up into 7,000 square foot lots, you could get about 124 lots, which would give you, if you did duplexes and 280Us on each lot, would give you about 497 units. That's really rough back of the napkin math, but it, it's the best I'm going to be able to do for you this evening. As far as the Fifth Street Crossing goes, right now the city's nowhere with it. The, the, it went to a community vote. It was roundly defeated in every section of the city to include the section of the city, the, to the north and specifically the northwest. So there does not seem to be desire to pay for a crossing at this point. So the city's approach at this point will be to see if we can maximize the flow across Fifth Street, the underpass and the Gallatin Crossing. Currently, there is no alternative plan for a separated grade crossing anywhere. So we have what we have. We can make it better. We can look at traffic flow and possibly rerouting some traffic to make use of all three crossings. But as far as an additional crossing goes, there is not currently a plan for an additional crossing. And I think Wendy might've had one more question that I missed. Wendy, did you have another question?
Yeah, it was on impact fees.
Oh, right. So it, it may or may not go through a subdivision process. It depends on how they develop it. If somebody wanted to develop the entire 20 acres as condominiums, there wouldn't be a subdivision process. But yes, they would still have to pay impact fees for, on the number of units they hook up. So impact fees will be required regardless, but subdivision review may not be depending on how it was developed.
Thank you. And I think Michael had a question as well.
Yeah, I just, I, it's a comment I, digging into my past memory here. I feel like the North Town subdivision plan, I, I was remembering that that triangular parcel of property there was zoned R3 and I guess it's R2. I, I wasn't, wasn't that part of that discussion when North Town came to us?
So that parcel was requested to be rezoned twice, but the commission denied it both times. So it has remained R2.
So we've already been down the path of, do we want R3 or R2 in the neighborhood?
I think so. I think the only difference was that was all pre-growth policy.
Yeah. Okay.
And so am I correct in understanding that somehow, well, the Livingston School District, I mean, as far as financially being able to develop it, what, what could they develop on, on that land at this point?
So.
Oh, Deborah, I think next up we'll have Todd Wester from the school district.
Okay, great.
Question for you.
Yeah, well, probably not about what they could develop, since that's not really, we're not talking developments. We're only talking zoning. So just assume they can, they could develop even, no matter what it's zoned, the school can develop whatever they want. Because they are not required to stick to zoning regulations because they're a different government entity.
And I'm curious too, if it was kept R2, do you think we would have the same concerns over the Fifth Street Crossing? Like, will that still be the same comments that Matthew had in the staff report?
Not from Matthew's perspective. His, his recommendation was if it couldn't be mitigated at Fifth Street, that he would recommend R2.
I think the numbers, Michael, as you said, 470 units would be the max for R2 and 747 units would be the max for R3. That, that's sort of the round numbers that we're talking. It's, it's a lot of units either way. All right. So why don't we stop right there and make a transition? Todd, I see you're with us. Todd is, I think, the curriculum director for the school district. Is that correct? And he was at the meeting I attended this morning. I should say that the reason I was called is that the idea of zoning that property mixed use had come up. And it's a new category that we have available to us and the school said they weren't aware of it. And so I just wanted to hear what the possibilities were. So Todd, do you want to speak to us at this moment about what the intent from the school district is?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I have been a curriculum director in the district. Really what I do is a whole lot of assisting the superintendent on lots of different projects and, and this happens to be one. I, I was not directly involved in the meetings that took place with a facility committee, but our board is also in session tonight and I am the administrator who was able to peel out of the board meeting and, and come to present to you. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. It's, it's a real honor. Maybe what I'll do is, is start with a little history and background of the property. The schools purchased that 20 acres of land in 1995. And since that time, much of the surrounding property has been annexed and developed and all of it has been zoned. As Mike said, the adjoining properties are zoned public and R2. And there are some smaller parcels of R3 zoning nearby. And when our partners at the city recently approached us urging that the time has come to designate zoning for the school property, we, we responded. As ever, the schools want to be good community partners and good neighbors. We also want to be helpful contributors to the solution to the desperate need for affordable housing in Livingston. As Wendy talked about, I'm not sure if the ship has sailed. It, it may have, but hoping to be partners in finding a solution to that. As many other employers and service providers do, the schools see that our staff and families As many other employers and service providers do, the schools see that our staff and families are often unable to find housing. That negatively affects enrollment and staff recruitment and retention. It's hard on families. It's hard on on our staff. And we, you know, have a concern about how it's going in the community. Recently, the school facility committee met to consider the city's request for zoning recommendation. While the schools have not developed a formal plan for this parcel, the facility committee considered a future possibility of public school facilities and grounds with affordable housing options for staff. The schools cannot currently afford to build staff housing. So we don't see that, Deb, as one of the things that we're likely to do, either to be a builder or developer or a landlord of of housing based on the current picture. But R three zoning could provide opportunities for the district to negotiate with third parties for purchase of a portion of the land to develop multifamily housing like apartments or condominiums for school employees now they're struggling to find house. The school district understands that even if the parcel were to be zoned R three, any further action would take time and would require substantial public input. For example, we think it's probably unlikely that the whole 20 acres would be developed at once. So that would require subdivision approval and impact fees. And then schools must also have voter approval to dispose of, meaning to sell or trade or donate any portion of a property such as this parcel. So all of that would require public meetings and public vote. Since the district submitted its recommendation, a number of community members have come forward with concerns and ideas and proposals for how the parcel should be zoned and used. Some have asked for R two designation, others suggested mixed use as at our meeting today. Others would prefer that the land be zoned public. Several have asked that there be more time for discussion and idea sharing and comprehensive planning before any determination of any zoning designation. I myself have attended some of these meetings and and have urged for comprehensive planning and and have many times suggested that the Miles Park baseball fields be moved to this property and that the schools take over Miles Park and build a middle school there. And that we move the kids from Wynans and Washington into the one central campus and then use the Wynans and Washington grounds for, in part for housing. So we also, the the district also understands that the property is exempt from any zoning designation while the district owns it. But still, we want to be doubly certain that a zoning designation would not limit the district's option to build a school on that north side location, should that someday become a necessity. So lastly, wanting to be good partners, neighbors and contributors to broad solutions, the school district is prepared tonight to accept postponement of a zoning commission recommendation until further exploration and discussion can take place. We understood this to be an information phase hearing, so there was no expectation by the district that action would happen tonight. And we are happy to have further conversation with the community. So thank you all for attending tonight and hearing me. And I'm taking notes to report back to my colleagues on the board.
Thank you, Todd. So are there any questions from the public or from the zoning commission for Todd? Rose Clumpers, can you speak to us?
I'm Rose Clumpers, address 1207 Wildflower Trail. We'd be right across the street from the school property cornerwise. There's been terminology talked about tonight that I am unfamiliar with. I'm familiar with R two and R three. And that would be from a few years ago when Bosman developer came in and wanted to zone that property differently into R three, so he could have built two or three story apartment houses, which that he fought for a couple of years and was turned down both both years. R three, what would R one be with units on that land? Single housing units, how many units would be if that would be R one? And another question is mixed use, that that's a new terminology to me. Is mixed use like R three?
Okay, thank you, Rose. I think maybe I can start to answer your questions. I, R one is a designation that there's very, very few houses in, but it extends very few areas that are R one. And they're typically large lots with a single house on them. And they historically and in other places in the country, they tend to be the wealthier parts of town. And I, in terms of more need for more density, I don't think that there's any possibility that property would be designated R one. In terms of mixed use, this is a category that has been adopted by the city in the last, well, this winter some at some point. And it's it it's different from residential housing in the sense that it allows residential orientated businesses to be mixed in with residences. So a mixed use zone could include any kind of housing. R one, R two, R three type housing. But it could also, let me get the chart off here. It it also could include clinics, foster care centers, personal care centers, so you know, beauty salon, childcare centers, vet clinics, bonderies, bed and breakfast, professional and business offices, some retail, barber shops, beauty parlors, restaurants, bars, and let me see, banks. That kind of thing. So the idea is if you lived up in that area, rather than getting in your car and driving all the way across Fifth Street and then going out to the grocery store or going to have coffee downtown, you might have a coffee shop or a bakery or a gym or a beauty salon or some sort of establishment right there in the neighborhood that you could use. And the intent is to try to foster more community in the area such that people would get together more than they normally would do in a purely residential subdivision.
Is there such a thing then with mixed use that you can restrict apartment houses? Two, three story apartment houses for so many units that would have, you know, triple quadruple the traffic on this side of the the railroad tracks?
As far as I know, there's nothing in the zoning that allow that restriction. That would be up to the property owner to make that determination.
So if a big developer came in and bought that land and it was zoned R three, they could do whatever they wanted to with it, and we wouldn't have any recourse.
They would have to follow the ordinances and the building codes and all of that.
Yeah, but the dense, the dense.
You would have some ordnance, yes.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody that's talking about this tonight from the board that's proposing R three, are any of you living north of the tracks that would have the impact by this?
Let's, hey, Rose, let's direct our questions to Todd for now. And if you have any questions for the intent of the school district on this matter? Any other further questions for Todd?
Yes, I have a question.
This is Rick Lampu.
Lampu, yep. I just want to clarify, Todd said that the school district had no expectation that there would be a decision tonight. And that they're willing to hold off on an R three designation or a decision until there's further community discussion. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, so Rick, you know, probably partly because of the way our board processes work. Usually an item like this would come up for information first and then action later. And so that's probably what we had in mind coming in here. But but furthermore, Jim did a nice job today explaining to us how the process with the commission works. And just, you know, we, having heard, you know, today was really the the first time, for example, that we had a rundown on what mixed use is. And so that combined with just other thoughts and discussions and conversations we've had, we're, yeah, we're not feeling like we wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be willing to take more time to discuss, certainly willing to take more time to discuss.
Thank you.
Can I get your address, please, for the minutes?
Mine, 1112 Prairie Drive.
Thanks, Rick. Any more questions for Todd? Jane, can you unmute yourself, please, Jane? I can't hear you.
All right, I'm on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I appreciate this opportunity to make a comment and have input from the public. I also appreciate the work that goes into being on the city commission. And for heaven's sakes, the school board puts in many, many hours for no pay and lots of responsibility. I do think this is a constant thing that keeps coming up. This, the growth is going north. From the school district, we have, if the growth is going there, we have one school north of the tracks, Washington School. If there's going to be a lot of growth in this direction at some point, it seems folly with land that may be pretty much paid for. I don't know where they are on the payout on it. To have no place to go and starting fresh, buying new property for a school, I would think would be an issue for sure. If you've tried in storms, I've lived on the north side since about the late, when was that, late eighties? It's pretty hectic. It boils down to the same old problem, which evidently is too expensive to address, is having more than one way out of this place up here. You go under the underpass or you go way down on the very, you know, going east, there's or the railroad crossing. I don't know if we're putting the cart before the horse or it's so expensive, we can't do that. I don't know what goes first. I guess the issue tonight, though, is not to determine that, but whether what could be the zoning for this particular property. I think it would be very wise to postpone a decision for sure without a little more input from the community. Not just the people who live up here, but the whole community. There's a lot of planning that sometimes seems to me, this affects our whole county, what we do. Sometimes I think we just micro areas rather than let's look at Park County. Is there a board? I don't know. Is there a situation where we can have some public input on all lots of issues? I know this is uncovering something that is not specific to the thing. I do appreciate the opportunity. I do have to run down to Park High. There's a music concert my grandson is in. Thank you for calling on me, and I do appreciate the input tonight, hearing it and giving it.
Thank you, Jane.
Jane, can I get your last name and your address, please, for the minutes?
Jane Chaney, I live at 822 North 12th Street. I've taught 25 years in Livingston. That's, I guess, all you need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I have a question for Mike Cardinals. We are having our first hearing on this proposed zoning map amendment. If we would postpone a decision tonight, I know in previous times on previous projects, we've made a decision at the subsequent second meeting next month. Is there, now that we've started this process, is there a deadline by which we would have to make some kind of a zoning designation? Is that in fact next month?
Yeah, in general, yes. Because this is an unzoned parcel of land in the city and the process has started. We just need to go through with the process. Obviously, it's going to go before the city commission, so this is not the last chance for public input. There'll be at least two more two more meetings where this is brought in front of the city commission, and one of those will be a public hearing. But there's public comment for both. So there'll be a minimum of two more chances for the public to participate in the process. If if you feel like there's not enough information, but really, there's there's no additional information that we can get other than opinions on on what people like. So if you feel that there's more information you need, staffs can certainly provide that before the next meeting, but I would not expect it to go. It's not like we would stop the process here. The process needs to continue through the city commission.
Okay, my my thought on it, though, is for the school board, my impression from the meeting today this morning was that they really haven't put hardly any thought into the matter. And that they really wanted to, and that will take some time.
Well, and just a reminder on that as well, in general, landowners aren't consulted, right? In general, landowners are not consulted about the zoning. They can come to the public meetings and make comment, just as Mr. Bendon did tonight. But in general, the school was already like, we pretty much reached out to the school as a professional courtesy to allow them to comment ahead of time. But in in general, it's not a negotiation with the landover on zoning. It's just a city process to go through to do it. And that's just like the other landowners were notified on the proceedings tonight. They're welcome to participate, but it's really not a landowner led process.
Right. Well, I guess my response, my goal is that the school district is trying to be good citizens and and we should be too. So anything we can do to facilitate communication between the school district and the public would be a benefit to everybody concerned. I guess all I'm suggesting is that I think it would be a good idea to give the school district another month to talk this through and then come back next month with some more refined ideas on what they would like to see happen with the property. Okay, Todd, yes, you're muted.
Thank you, Jim. I just wanted to respond to Mike's comment there that we appreciate this courtesy that we've been given to to comment. And I know that, you know, it's a large piece of property and you know, we have a good partnership with the city. And, you know, want to continue to again, be partners in the planning in whatever way that we can. So yeah, it's appreciated that we were able to to make some comments and appreciate also perhaps the opportunity to have, you know, a longer conversation period here and then come back with more information for the for the commission and the city.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, any other questions for Todd? Do we see a hand? Tom Blue Rock?
I've got unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I think this property has a lot of, a lot of potential. And really ought to be considered very carefully in the sort of overall planning scheme and for the city and the growth policy. And because it's owned by the school district, there's, it has some, it has some capabilities and some characteristics which give it some sort of special, special, special status. First of all, let, I, I, my primary business for about 40 First of all, let, I, I, my primary business for about forty years was planning schools in Southern California. So I know a lot about, you know, how school district properties work and and function. And as a twenty-acre parcel, it's like a normal elementary, suburban elementary school, for example, is about ten acres, which is about half of this parcel. So if there was a need, ever a need for additional educational facilities, it really presents a good opportunity. The second thing is a public entity owning property has a lot of opportunities that private, that privately owned property doesn't have. Because we have a, because we have a housing crisis in Livingston, there are opportunities that the school district would have to reconfigure property, to, you know, entitle property, to, to, to create worker housing or low-income housing that that normally zone, that normally zone property would not have. They can, they can make deals with developers, they can, they can, they can, they can put restrictions on things that would create worker housing, which just simple market forces wouldn't allow. So I think, I think there's, they're really, this property is unique in that, in that, you know, it has, it has those kinds of, those kinds, because it has private ownership or public ownership, I'm sorry. Now, you know, sort of to finish, R two, the way the city zoning code allows it, allows for a lot of units because you could build eighty, you know, depending on how you categorize things. You have eighty use, you have, you know, as, as, as Mike Cardo sort of said, it was, I sort of did a back-of-the-napkin sketch, sort of yield on this property. And if you did the whole thing, it's about five hundred units, which is about the same, which is about the same yield that, that, that Mike put on it. But it really represents an opportunity, not just in this neighborhood, but in the entire city, to do some things that advance public policy and would, would, could do some things that normal private development would not allow.
Right. Thank you, Tom. Any other comments or questions for Todd? Yes, Dave, well, I've got listed Dave W., but yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gerbikinen and I live at eleven oh nine Prairie Drive. And I would like to ask Todd, I, you know, I just heard, like, perhaps there's some talk about maybe one option would be to move the ball fields up here and then maybe make a solid campus down in where the school is now. And to me, that seems like that would be a lot of, lot of less stress on our railroad crossings or the traffic flow coming up and down here. And I, I don't know if that is like something that is in consideration or could be considered. And also, if you sold, if the school sold off the property and just, just say at a later date, I don't know how fast the schools are growing. I'm just kind of throwing this out there. But if you would need to purchase other property, does it seem like it would be better for the school to hang on to this piece for future?
So Nancy, I want to be really careful how I represent that idea about land swap. That that's one that I came up with and I would say that it might not be representative of what the schools are thinking right now. But when I was president of the baseball association, the notion occurred to me, I was working at the schools at the same time. And so I took the idea to our facility committee then and to parks and trails and to the city and county commissions. It's, and I would say that it's something that the district might be thinking a little bit more about. Reason being that, so we have two aging facilities, Washington and Wynans. And we have some engineering analysis being done right now to try to inform us about whether those buildings can be, you know, do they have a long-term future? Are they buildings that we think can be restored to high function? We know things like that the Washington facility would need a new boiler and lots of other things. Or are we better off building new facilities? And then, interesting statistic, back when we had neighborhood schools, where, you know, we would try to have a school be built near where population was kind of growing up, we ran into a kind of a conundrum in a lot of Montana Class A-sized towns where because our funding comes per student that belongs to our system, we would have some weird things happen, like maybe there would only be four fourth graders over here in this particular school and then forty-five over here. And so we'd move teachers around to the best of our ability, but we really ended up having to move students around. And then when you start moving students around, you really need to also allow for school choice. Those kind of go hand in hand. And what we found was that we had less than half of students actually attending their neighborhood schools. So a lot of Montana schools started to go to the grade-level schools design, partly for that reason and partly to facilitate better collaboration among all the teachers at a particular grade level in a small town and to allow for acceleration. So a thought that we've tossed around a little is the idea of, you know, what if we did have a consolidated campus with very careful planning of how the traffic moves through it for safe drop-off and safe pickup? That's, that's been something that we've been looking at for a little over five years, looking at the feasibility of that. But a piece of it has been, where do we acquire the extra property to be able to do that? Of course, we always look at the long property, but we don't know how viable that is. So my proposal of a land swap, I mean, there are a lot of things would have to take place. Their voters would have to approve a swap between the city and the schools. We would have to pass a bond to build that middle school. You know, toss in there that we might have to pass a recreational tax zone in order to maintain all the, you know, the, the sports facility on the hill. And it becomes a little bit complicated, but I think, I think worth looking into. But that, that I want to make sure is understood to be an idea that I've had and not necessarily what our facilities committee has looked at, but the, the facilities committee has certainly looked at what we do about aging facilities and how we, how we prepare for the future for that.
All right, Tom, I'm going to hold back on you, just to see if there's anyone else that has any questions. I guess not. So, Tom, go ahead.
I think one of the, I think one of the opportunities about this property is its size. At twenty acres, it could be a full-on middle school or something less than that. So because of its size, it has a lot of, it has a lot of options that are attached to it that, and a lot of opportunities that the school district could have if it needs more facilities, if it needs to augment things, if it needs to build another, or whatever. It's a big piece of property as, as, as a piece of school district property and, and and chances are that it could, even if it were developed as a school site, there would be surplus property that could be developed for something else. And so it's, 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 as, I think, as Todd was saying, it's a really complex kind of set of, set of options. But, yeah, if the school district were to develop it as a school, it doesn't really need zoning. But if it wants to develop it as something else, or it wants to sell off people that have somebody else be, be, be developing it, it needs zoning. And all those other things apply. If it needs to sort of sell off public property, it has whatever legal complications need, need to happen to do that. But it has all those opportunities. This, this site has, is, is one of those great opportunities for the city to establish some, to solve some of its issues and, and the school district to, 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 to solve some of its issues or develop some of its priorities. And, you know, it, it's, it's interesting, but I think zoning it for residential doesn't really, I don't think it, I don't think it really limits what the, the school district's options. So, but I, I just like to sort of emphasize the fact that it's a very flexible piece, piece of property because of its size.
Thank you, Tom. We've got a hand raised. RC, go ahead. You're muted. RC?
Yeah, there we go. Just got to find the right place on the screen. Okay, I'm Rich Crossland. I live at twelve fifteen Ridgeview. So I'm right up here, very close to that piece of property. So following up on what Tom said and what Todd said, that piece of property is unique also in the fact that the freaking thing is flat or pretty close to it. And all the other property up around here is pretty hilly. So, I mean, as far as sports fields, as far as school development, it seems like it would be good. I think Jane made a comment earlier about school district probably needs to take a long view of where, you know, what properties they're going to need, and this one seems to be a good one for that. Now, of course, I'm looking at this, I, you know, I don't want it, I certainly don't want to see seven hundred and fifty, you know, is it, if it's R three, they say what, seven hundred and forty-seven? It could be developed to seven hundred and forty-seven. The streets around here could not handle that, especially with the fifth street crossing. I mean, I'm relatively new to the area. We've owned this house for a few years, but we haven't lived here that long. But I got to say, unless the infrastructure of streets is really fixed around here, having something high density makes no sense. And I think the school district, it would make sense for them to hold on to this and think about, you know, I think Todd's idea of land swap, that kind of thing makes a lot of sense. And, and I hate to see the city pressure anybody into making a decision when there's still more thought needed. You know, we've had a, we had an HOA meeting here last week or week before. There's a lot of comment of just within our group or comments within our group of, you know, kind of being a surprise that someone would think about R three up here. It doesn't make sense from an infrastructure standpoint. But as far as, I, I just think more time is needed for people to really look at some serious options of what can be done. I know, that's, that's kind of my input. Like I said, I'm a new resident here, but I've come from areas that have been really screwed up by people, you know, bringing in high rises and that kind of stuff. And my latest would be in Washington, where we had Redmond, Washington, which is Microsoft land. You can't even move around in your car anytime. I don't care where it is, Sunday at two in the morning is still traffic. So we need to watch that, you know, and the railroad tracks make a really big impact to that. So we need to, all of that needs to be thought about. And I like the idea of cooler heads prevailing and let's think about this for the long term.
All right, thank you. Oh, excuse me. So I'd like to keep this as questions for Todd. Who's got a question for Todd? Stacy?
So my question for Todd, Stacy Jovic, four ten South Eighth, is in the school district's discussion, did you talk about keeping it as public land? And that would then give you the ability of, of having however long it takes to come up with a master plan for the, for the land?
So, as I mentioned, I wasn't at the facility committee meeting, Stacy, so I'm not sure how the committee, you know, whether they said here are all of the different possible zoning options. I think, I think it was probably a little different than that because I think we just received today from Jim the, the layout that kind of shows the, the bullet list of what can happen in the various different zoning areas. So I think it was more that, you know, maybe a recommendation was R two and our, our committee said, you know, something more flexible would be R three. So I don't know whether keeping it as public, you know, zoned or zoning it as public was something that was discussed. But I think that, you know, the thought was R three, if not that, R two, so that there could be the potential of more flexibility. Again, as, as was described, you know, the property, if the school's own it, can be developed very flexibly, I guess. But again, we're not in the position to be the developer so much. So it would probably have been something more like the thought of, you know, can there be a part of it developed for one thing, a school perhaps, or, or ball fields or sports fields or what have you? We're in need of additional football field space and soccer field space and that kind of thing. And then could another part of it be, you know, developed for staff housing by a developer, a third-party person who we would contract with? So I think that was probably more of the conversation that happened with the facility committee.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, you've asked, you've talked a lot. There's anyone else that has a question for Todd?
I do, Jim.
Deborah, go ahead.
Have you spoken with the HRDC at all?
You know, I think we want to talk with the HRDC. Jim talked to us about connecting with HRDC. You know, Deborah, I learned a little bit about what the HRDC is doing in a whole separate project. We went over and looked at, you know, the, what's the, you know, the first house kind of thing in Bozeman that they're doing and got a little bit of a sense, but no, we have more to learn from HRDC.
Okay.
I've had my hand up.
Where I'm not seeing you.
My name is Mark. I'm at ten twenty-four Prairie Drive.
What's your last name, Mark?
Narden. So I'm curious, what is the urgency for the school to zone, for this to be built on this property? And I also want to address the fact that in the future, if an additional school needs to be built, where is it going to be built at? And when a lot is going for a hundred thousand dollars and you're needing ten acres to do a school and you have this ground already set in reserve, would it not be wise to do just that for future needs with the growth rate that's going on in Livingston or Park County and Galatin Counties?
So let's see, Mark, I think if I heard your two questions right, first one was, what's the urgency to build on the property? And I wouldn't say that we have an urgency to build on the property. We do have, we feel an urgent need to resolve the staffing crisis or the housing crisis for our staff, which leads to a staffing crisis for us. You know, we hire, we try to hire positions, but we find that when people can't find housing here, they don't accept our offer of the contract. And so we have a little bit of trouble with that, but then, so there's, there's some urgency around resolving that housing issue. But I would say there, there's not a huge urgency to build a building, or maybe I could say that better, Mark, that building a building takes some time. And we've been in, you know, some feasibility phase for a little while, trying to look at, you know, what the best master plan is for, for building. But you're right, the property is going to be expensive. And we're not sure if there's a possibility of acquiring property. And it's, that's one of the reasons that considering proposing swapping property may, that, that might be a solution for us, but, you know, that, that's going to require a lot more discussion.
So would it not be wise to table the decision at this time and postpone to get more data to do so?
Okay, Jim, I'm going to jump in real quick because we're kind of off topic. This, this isn't a question and answer session with the school. It's only about the zoning. No matter what we zone it, the school still has full opportunity to do whatever they want. They can keep it to build a school, they can use it to do whatever they want. This really, what the school does with it after it's owned is probably a topic for a school board meeting, but not a zoning commission meeting. This is just zoning.
Thank you, Mike. I was going to say that the only rush we really have at this point was my earlier question to Mike Cardos. We will have to make some kind of decision either tonight or in a month. That's the only, but a deadline we have. What the school district does is totally a separate issue. Alright, um.
I have a question or I'd like a comment.
Janet, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a new person on eleven ten Sweetgrass. And the zoning area in question is just right down the street from me. And I would like to make a comment as far as what kind of zoning to put it in. Is we need to keep the integrity of the beauty of Livingston. And by making it R three, where we're going to be crowding in apartments and lots of houses and things like that, is we're gonna lose that beauty. So that is my biggest concern.
Thank you, Janet. Alright, um. I think probably now we've, uh, cleared the air a bit here. Does anyone from the zoning commission? Uh, have any thoughts on the matter? Uh, no, I'm leaning sort of to allowing the, you know, waiting a month and allowing the school district to. Have some more discussions on the matter.
Jim, I think we still have some more public comment. I know Jonathan wanted to make a comment.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, Jonathan?
Yeah, Jonathan Henniger, one eleven North C Street. Um, yeah, I just think it wasn't clear that, um. If it was time for public comment yet, it just seemed like it was a question. So, um, I just wanted to make a comment about. I think that Tom Blue Rock has a really great point. This is an important parcel. Um, when I went up to the property and was looking at it. Um, it's really a good opportunity. It's a really nice parcel, and I think it has a lot of potential. And I think that it's, um, has a lot of potential, potentially as something like a planned unit development or something like that. And I think that that would make a mixed use designation, um. Appropriate for this area. Um, I think the entire community up there, uh, could benefit from uses like. A coffee shop and bakery or a neighborhood grocery store, daycare facility, especially if there's a school there one day. Um, and it wouldn't limit the number of houses and units potentially constructed, but it would open the door to more opportunities. And I think that that's really important if we're talking about, thinking about this parcel as one place. Um. I think that housing is a really significant problem in Livingston, um. And the best way to combat this is through high density developments and we. I've spent the last two years on the, um, Park County Housing Coalition, Housing Working Group. Helping to develop the Housing Action Plan, and we've identified a lot of different tools, um. Including higher density housing tools like the Community Land Trust. And we're gonna need a variety of different tools in order to combat, um, the housing problem. And I think that doing more single family homes. Um, isn't really gonna be a solution up there. I was looking and almost all the new homes in that area are selling for more than five hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's not affordable to most workers in this community. Um, and I think that, um. Wendy's comment about the ship having sailed on affordable housing, uh, was super deflating. Because I think we need to do a number of things in order for people to be able to afford to live here. I hope that this ship hasn't sailed on affordable housing because I hope to one day live here, uh, for a long time. And it, even though it does feel more out of reach every day, um, and I think that. This is a really good opportunity to do something about that problem. Uh, one of my good friends just resigned from their job in town. Um, and it's one of my last friends. It's a renter. Um, I've been here for four years and I've just seen so many people just cycle through with. Because of the really tight housing market, the really tight job market, the friends that I have and have had that are teachers. Um, don't really see a future in this community unless they already own a house. Um, and I think that a lot of people are who's, I think that as far as the railroad crossing goes, um. A lot of people that are saying no to this development also said no to the new railroad crossing. And, um, I don't think that. R two and R three or mixed use development are that significantly different on, uh, the railroad crossing. So I just think that this is a really great opportunity for the city, and I think it's really awesome that the school district is thinking so comprehensively about it. And I hope that, um. And I would support a mixed use or R three development in order to give the school district the most flexibility to do something that's. Um, really important for the north side of town.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Can I get your address?
One eleven North C Street.
Uh, so any further comments related to zoning on this property?
Yes.
Dave W?
Yeah, uh, my name is Cynthia Westover, I'm eleven oh five Prairie Drive. And my comment is, you know, we we talked about this brief briefly earlier in the, um. In the meeting, but R three has been turned down twice here. For a parcel that was a fraction of the size of this twenty acre parcel. It was a five acre parcel. This twenty acre parcel is four times as large. So if R three was not right. For a five acre parcel, I don't believe that is right for a twenty acre parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mary Stricker, please.
Thank you. Um, I live at eleven twelve Prairie Drive, uh, in the North Town HOA, and. I'm new to the area, but, uh, without first addressing the railroad crossing issue, which really seems to be the big elephant in the room. I believe designating the school property as R three would have a very negative impact on existing residents. On our north, in our north side neighborhoods and when, you know, just like what, um. Uh, the last speaker just said, when considering the zoning designation for that five acre piece. That that smaller triangular piece that abuts the school property in question, R two. Was all decided, and I have to ask, what the heck conditions have changed since that zoning decision was made? I I understand the school's needs for expansion. Uh, I understand the high density issues that we need to have in the town for, um, multiple housing. But, you know, the school property designation would really enable a massive increase in dwellings. The number seven forty seven, the way I calculate for the existing Ridgeview Trail properties that are already built. And the existing North Town properties that are currently built. That it would be four and a half times more housing just for those HOAs, and that's not even counting the other neighborhoods. You know, that the older neighborhoods that were existing before these two, uh, HOAs came into existence. So the increased congestion would be really be a cause frustration and inconvenience for existing landowners. And while the staff report says that, uh, it would have no effect on property values. I I strongly disagree with that in that with all of the congestion and all of the frustration. And the loss of time sitting at the railroad crossings. You know, uh, it will create an even worse impression for the North Town neighborhoods. And that will diminish the property values ultimately. And to Jonathan's, uh, point about all these houses or five hundred thousand dollar houses. You know, I really feel like we need to protect the values of our properties and not diminish them. So I just want to urge the commission to deny their R three zoning, and thanks for the time to talk.
Thanks, Mary. Um, let me see, um, Dave W?
Thank you very much. You know, when we bought this property, one of the things we paid attention to was what was this owning around us to protect our property values. And what this actually proposes by putting R three in there is pulling the rug out from all the residents. That when you looked at that map that was shown by Mr. Cardos, it showed R two all the way around that. If you throw this in there, you are going to hurt a lot of people who have a lot of money invested in this town and in their property. And, you know. You, you, everybody keeps throwing around about affordable housing. Unless there's a cap, demand for housing will dictate the cost. There isn't a developer out there that's gonna build something and say, I'm gonna take a thousand dollars a month rental for that. I know I could get twenty five hundred, but, you know, affordable housing and all, that's not gonna happen. I think that's very pie eyed. To think that, and it's a fantasy. And and no matter how you slice it, you can kid yourself about that or not. Because even last time with North Town, we were told in those meetings that was gonna be affordable housing. Isn't that affordable, four fifty to five hundred? I don't think so. I think you're going to hurt a lot of people if you put R three on that property. And and we will be one of them, and it would be a very sad instance if all of our work and our caution. And before buying our property was just pulled right off underneath us. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, can I get your last name and your address?
You're sorry about that. Dave Westover, eleven oh five Prairie.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, any other zoning related comments or questions? And also someone who hasn't talked already.
I've got a question. Or comment? This is Nate, this is Nathan Bolton, uh, eleven ten West Reservoir. And, um, I guess more or less it, I'm not gonna reiterate all the other concerns and comments about. I'd say more or less transportation, active transportation and trails and walkability. But I would say. You know, six months ago, the annexation of this property would just happen. And now planning board is looking to, or zoning is looking to get a zoning, uh, category to it. Uh, it it seems like a formality. Um, and as long as the school district, from what it sounds like from Todd, that they understand that they have. Um, a a good leverage on what they have options for, for master planning, comprehensive planning, long range planning. Um, it seems like it's formality just to zone it. So, um, I would, uh, advise R two. Um, or public space, and as long as they just don't sell it right off the bat, um, and I don't think they will. And I guess that's more or less, uh, my comment there.
Thank you. Any other questions? A little Herrera?
Hi, it's Amanda Herrera. Eleven ten West Reservoir. So I would second the transfer. The transportation issues we've talked about. I really want to bring up safety with the transportation. We have the North Town Development throwing in additional. How housing would really congest, as we know, a huge concern is fires. Let's think about what just happened in Boulder. So to throw in more housing without. Any sort of railroad crossing in the near future would be an issue. I definitely think that we need more housing, so some sort of balance between all of it. I don't know how that happens, but it seems like the school board. Would have to direct this. The formality of zoning it sounds like it needs to happen. In order to prevent overdevelopment quickly, I would advocate for this to be developed as park and open space.
Park and open space, right?
Thank you. Alright, uh, anyone else have other comments?
Yeah, am I ready to go?
Yeah, go ahead, Garrett.
Oh, hi. Uh, my name is Garrett Linderman. I'm at twelve oh four Sweetgrass Lane. I also live near, uh, this, this, uh, area that we're looking at zoning right now. I think my major concern here is just a general lack of infrastructure, like everyone else has said about the railroad crossing, but. Even more than that, when you're talking about a large apartment building, you're talking about a need for pedestrian traffic. We don't have continuous sidewalks on all areas of the road surrounding this parcel, or I guess it's not a parcel. Uh, this lot, this twenty acre lot, um, much less enough roads to mitigate seven hundred and forty additional cars. Um, if there are families there with multiple cars, maybe twelve hundred different vehicle, more vehicles on this side of the railroad tracks. Um, without lack, without an increase of infrastructure, basic access to things like bus stops. Or just easy access to Main Street. The worst case scenario of R three, there being a giant apartment complex being put on that, on that, uh, lot, um. It just sounds like it would be a little bit of a des- disaster. Um. As far as rents go, uh, it, I mean, I definitely do agree that we'd need more housing. Um, we definitely need more affordable housing, uh, but like someone mentioned earlier, I don't think we can just. Bet that someone isn't going to try and cash in on the high market by purchasing that property and, uh. Further adding to the problem by increasing rents, um, or or just cashing in on the existing rental market. Or non-existent, non-existing rental market here in Livingston. Uh, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Alright, anyone else who has not already spoken?
Yeah, I I have a comment. I have a comment to make.
You've already spoken, Nick.
I, all I did was, uh, ask for a clarification of what Todd said. What I want to do now is make my comment about the designation.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, real simple. I, uh, would hope that you deny the R three and, um. I I also, this mixed use designation is something new to me. I hadn't even heard about it until tonight. I don't know if it's new to a lot of other people, but I'm not comfortable with that designation either. I would say go with R two. I live at eleven twelve Prairie Drive. My name is Rick Lamploo. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Okay. Um, Brooke Scott, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. Uh, my name is Brooke Scott. I live at eleven oh four Sweetgrass. Um, the property and questions across the street from my house. I would, I I'd echo a lot of what is said, but, uh, I guess what I'd put out there is that. Given that the school district has the right to do whatever they want on the property. The prudent, the safe and prudent thing to do is to zone it R two like the surrounding area. That gives you, that gives you time to, gives the school district time to develop a proposal and figure out what they want to do. Um, and doesn't, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll quell a lot of the worries that many of us as homeowners have about a giant development across the street. Now, I hadn't even, oh, not unlike, uh, Ross, I hadn't even considered, um, a a mixed use development. Uh, and going back to what I I believe Jonathan said, um, if I had wanted to have, um, a coffee shop and everything else. Across the street from my house, I would have bought a house downtown, not up here. So, um, I do think, uh, as I said, that the safe and prudent recommendation is to go with, uh, to go with R two. And give the school some time to figure out, um, what makes sense for them. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Durkey. I'd like to make a comment, please.
You are quite muddled. I could not understand you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Who is this?
My name is Alyssa Durkey. I live at eight two nine North Fall Street. And my property is directly across the street from the field. Um, again, just like everyone else, um, all the same concerns with the traffic, um, the safety concerns as far as. We have to stop and think about, we don't have any stop signs on this side of the tracks. We have probably a handful past Summit. Um, and people who are moving in this area, I can't tell you how many accidents a day I almost get to just leaving my house on my way to go to work. Um, not to mention the traffic gets all the way backed up to Seventh Street. Again, I'm not gonna talk about that. We all know it's terrible. Um, more so, my point of view is coming from a property manager. I manage the Brookstone condos over on the east side of town that are also supposed to be, quote unquote, affordable housing. All of these condos are not only falling apart after being two years old, the developer is going to go through. It's because they just keep pushing people off as their houses are falling apart. That's what is qualified as affordable housing for the city. That is something that the city approved, the city has. You know, all these people who are supposed to be having affordable housing, it doesn't work like that. It's not how it's gonna work.
Alyssa? We've, we've lost your audio. Alright, well, I think we got. We got some of what you were talking about. Thank you. Um. Is that it? Anyone else?
Hello, this is Christopher Atkinson. Can you hear me?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind, um, I live up here at eleven twenty Ridgeview Trail. Uh, I used to live. I moved from Bozeman because of how tough it was to afford living there. In two thousand and five, I moved here, um. I want to just second what a lot of people have said about just trying to, um, not, not overburden the area really. If we can imagine the fires, like Amanda said, or a, uh. You know, heaven forbid, a train. the fires, like Amanda said, or a, you know, heaven forbid, a train wreck that could happen and close off both of the main egresses from this area of the community. It would be really hectic up here. Just watched it really get tight over the years, last seventeen years, and I don't know, it's really, it breaks my heart to think that, yeah, something, you know, just simple math going from R two of the max, you know, four hundred and seventy to seven hundred and forty, which would be the max units on an R three would be a huge difference if you consider almost everybody in Montana owns at least one vehicle. That's a seven hundred and forty compared to four hundred and seventy more vehicles. Trying to get through, through those two little spots is quite a huge difference in my mind, just with simple math. So yeah, I appreciate your time. Everybody else has said it quite concisely and nicely. So I appreciate your all's time for comment. Thank you.
I think I'm going to take the liberty now. I think we've had a lot of comments. And I think probably every topic has been covered at least once. And at this point, I'd like to ask the zoning commission to ask any questions they might have or make any kind of statements that they would like to make. Anyone from the zoning commission?
I'd, I'd make a couple of comments, I guess, to clarify my comment about affordable housing. I think I agree, we can be very creative on how we address the housing crisis. But I hear affordable housing as a reason to increase density sometimes or justify development. And so I just want to be real careful about how we talk about affordable housing and how it's used to either justify or not justify a given zone change or land use designation. And then I guess I have a question, maybe more. This is, I mean, this, this traffic issue is such a significant public health and safety issue. And I, I heard your response, Michael, and I guess I don't understand enough to really understand how we fix this. And so I'm, I'm wondering, how do we understand more on how to get this issue resolved? Because I'm not supportive of increased density anywhere on that north side until that traffic issue and congestion is fixed. And so when I hear that's just, this is just what we're going to have to deal with. I don't think is an acceptable answer. Especially knowing what could happen in a number of scenarios. So I know I'm a little disconnected from all the history in the past, and I know it's costly, but that still doesn't seem like an insurmountable issue, given how it's, we're going to continue to exasperate it with continued growth, development, us trying to address our issues with housing. So maybe that's an action item where we can get more information so we understand what the options are to try to address that issue. But I am not supportive of increased density at this time because we can't continue to kick this issue down the road.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else from the commission have a comment?
I do. I'd, I'd like to piggyback on that a little bit. I'm curious about, you know, some additional information as well. Like have any of the previous traffic studies addressed or commented upon what, you know, how the traffic could potentially be alleviated if there are services on the north side of town, like a grocery store or a gas station? If people aren't having to leave that side of town, I guess I'm wondering, like, does that allow for additional density? And I don't know if that's a question that we've looked to answer yet. So I'm curious about that.
Thank you, Deborah. Anyone else with a comment or a question? Okay. Well, I think we're winding down here in terms of discussion. So we have a couple of some options here. We can we can have a motion to place a zoning designation on the property now and vote on that. We can motion to table it for a month. Give the school district a chance to get up to speed on their thinking. And and then vote on it next month. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to pursue one of those options?
Jim, I just wanted to say that I would support tabling this for another month and giving school district a little bit more time. I think just to everyone's point about the traffic, I'm really concerned about that as well. And I'm curious if we have options for more information from the city on if we were to do the R three or R two designation and what the impact would be. And just get some more information on really the implications of choosing either of those options.
Okay. Anyone else from the commission? No, I don't know. Michael, did you want to make a motion?
Oh, me? Should I motion to, or are you asking Michael Wajalak?
No, Michael is jealous. Were you making a motion to table this issue till next month or were you just?
Yeah, I do. I do want to make a motion to table it till next month. Are we able to ask for more info from the city as well? Within that time period?
Sure.
Can address that quick if you want, Jim.
Oh, go ahead, Michael.
Sure. So there's not a lot of additional information out there, and most of it you guys have already talked about. I mean, you talked about how many trips a general dwelling produces, right? And so it's really just the difference in the number of possible trips between those two types of zoning. Mixed use would be a whole, whole different mix of traffic because it would depend a lot on how it was developed, how much of it was commercial, how much of it was residential, the types of commercial, even but even zoning it public would have a different effect on traffic. If you move the ball fields up there, you're going to move a lot more traffic up there as well. So really, there's not a lot of additional information. You can look at the north side traffic study to see the trips that go across the fifth street already. So those were documented when we did that study. So you can see when that was done. It was a couple of years ago now. What the number of trips were, I think it was at ten thousand. So you're, you're still talking a small percentage of trips. But remember, this isn't the last, this isn't the last piece of property up there to be developed, right? There's still, there's still several sections or at least one phase, maybe two phases of North Town that'll probably come before the city. There's another phase with Discovery Vista that'll come before the city. All of those things are out there. There's also really not a lot more information on crossings. You know, as far as the history goes, the city has been trying since nineteen seventy to come up with a way to build an additional crossing out there. And the, the crux of it is we don't have the money to do it. And when it has been put in front of the voters, they decided they didn't want to pay for it. So there's really, you can, you can try to do things, you can try and widen Fifth Street, but you can't do much with the railroad. We did add the turn lane that helps some. We'll work on timing of lights. We'll work on things like that to, to make history as efficient as it can be. But there's no significant project that's going to solve this problem in the near future.
And Michael, do you feel like the city is exhausted all outside funding sources on this project?
Yeah, I think we've applied for eight or nine federal grants for this project, and we've never made it even to the finals. There's just not enough traffic for the, for the feds to care. It just doesn't affect enough people that we're going to get. I think they're billed grants now. They were tiger grants. I think eight is where we stand right now on applications for those and have been unsuccessful on all of them. So, so there really isn't outside sources of funding for this. You're still looking, no matter where you do it, you're probably talking between ten and twenty million dollars. I mean, if you had the money, you could, you could build a separated grade crossing at Fifth Street. Right? You could trench it, put the railroad, Front Street and Park Street on bridges and the, you'd have a trench from Chinook to Calendar. I mean, it's, it's technologically possible. You can do anything, but the money, it's, money is always the issue.
Michael, how far off are we as far as like what the feds would want to see for our growth to start qualifying for those grants?
Probably, maybe they don't give you numbers on that, but, but probably along ways. I mean, when you look at the entire population of the city is eight thousand and you have maybe what? Just, just under forty percent on the north side. So you're talking less than four thousand people total. It's just, it's just not big enough numbers to get the Department of Transportation involved.
And when was that last, when was the last grant application?
I think we did it a year and a half ago, two years.
So you're not currently pursuing any funding?
No, because we spent about eighty thousand dollars just applying for those grants. And just, we just weren't competitive. We were just basically throwing money away. So we stopped applying.
Well, we could just fill up the whole north side with all these new developments and increase the misery index over there to the point where people would be willing to pay for the, pay for it themselves, I guess. It seems to be the only, the long term option I see. Well, all right. So we have a motion from Michael to table this zoning designation for a month. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deborah. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that passed. Thank you. All right. Well, that went a long time, but I appreciate everybody sticking with it. And thank you very much for your, your comments. All right, next. We have a recommendation on seventy two North A Street and seventy two North Ninth Street zoning map amendment. This is a piece of property very close to the school property. For those of you who live up there, it's, it's kind of in the squail there. There's a trucking outfit that, that has some metal buildings there and a couple of houses. So that land has been annexed into the city and we need to put a zoning designation on it. It's one parcel, I believe, is two acres. And the other parcel is about one acre, I believe. Michael Cardos, do you have any comments to make on its application?
Sure, I'll run through Matthew's report really quick. Again, there's the area we're talking about, commonly referred to as Prince's Trucking. It was also annexed into the city in September of twenty one. Jim writes two parcels, both around a couple of acres. Right now, its primary use is a trucking business. That would be grandfathered, no matter what you zone it. So that would remain, they would be, they would be able to remain with that use until it ceased to be used for that for a period of one year. So as long as it continued to be used for that business, it would be grandfathered indefinitely. Other than that, the rest of the staff report is very similar to the one we just talked about. As far as R two is the prevailing zoning around this area, it would qualify more for spot zoning because of its smaller size. But in general, just to make it consistent with the rest of the, the area, we as staff and Matthew's recommendation was to zone it R two.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Is there anybody, is there a representative from owners here that would like to make any kind of comment? I'm not hearing from any owners here. Michael Cardos, do you know, I assume they have been contacted? Do you know of any kind of reaction or to this designation?
The property owners were amenable to having it zoned R two.
Okay, thank you. All right then, are there any comments from the public on this R two zoning designation? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. I will bring up that R two would allow, according to the staff report, a range of possible units, thirteen primary residents and thirteen accessory dwellings, up to twenty five primary residences in twenty five eight use if zoned R two. So that's, that's the max possible in terms of units that would be put in there. I don't know that there's any indication that the property owners have any plans, but that's what's possible if we designated R two. Is there any comments from the zoning commission?
I have none.
Okay, no comments. Can I, this is maybe easy. Do, do we have a motion from the commission? The recommendation from the staff is R two. Do we have any kind of recommendation for that or something else? Jim, I'll make a motion that we zone these parcels R two. Okay, thank you, Michael. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, that passes unanimously. They should all be that easy. All right, what's next? Recommendation on the area between the railroad tracks and Gallatin Bennett Street zoning map amendment. Uh-oh, hope I can find it. Michael Cardos, perhaps you could discuss this and then at some point put up a map?
So there is the area that we're talking about. So it's the area south of Bennett Street there. Specifically, the mixed use areas and the two industrial areas outlined in blue. Those are the only areas that we're discussing tonight as far as zoning goes. These are almost exclusively railroad lands. At least the vast majority of them are owned by either BNSF or MRL, and soon though will be one corporation. So everything will be owned by BNSF. There is one private owned parcel that's a set of storage units on Gallatin Street. So the staff recommendation on this one, you can see is mixed use for the majority of the property. And then leaving the ones that are surrounded by industrial, adding those as industrial to keep the uses consistent through those, those properties. In the ETJ flum, the areas are proposed as mixed use. So this would be consistent with that document as far as the growth policy goes. It does allow higher densities, which is another another strategy of the growth policy. It would allow residential places to go in there. Obviously, if anyone wanted to develop residentially, they would have to work with the state to make sure that all of the environmental hazards are completely remediated before the state would allow any residential growth in that area. It is absolutely infill development. It would reduce urban sprawl. It does encourage development closer to the eastern crossing, even though it's on the north side. That is probably the least used crossing, so we don't anticipate a problem there. It is a little disconnected from the rest of the city as far as active transportation goes. That's a tough place for active transportation. But similar to some of the new areas we've zoned in Brookstone and Green Acres. It will redevelop lands, which is another objective of the growth policy that are known or presumed to contain contamination. Much of the area is owned by the railroad and due to the contamination, there was a significant environmental radiation. Zoning it mixed use encourages further mitigation, so it can be used commercially again, but soil evaluation would have to be done prior to any residential development. It does support compact growth. It does allow a mixed use of housing. It does also, one of the objectives we don't talk about much, increases efforts to partner with Montana Rail Link to rehabilitate surplus railroad property and integrate it into the community. So in this, this is kind of a unique one to that one. As far as improve the traffic flow to the north side, it does allow a maximum of close to one thousand, three hundred It does allow uh, a maximum of close to 1,390 dwelling units if it was developed to its full extent under mixed use. Um, and then finally, objective to prioritize existing roadways and utility infrastructure to ensure connectivity. Obviously, the infrastructure to the, for wastewater is super easy in this location since it's basically across the street from the wastewater treatment plant. Other than that, Matthew's comments are fairly straightforward. It is one of the larger undeveloped areas within the city. Uh, so it would help with infill significantly. And his recommendations are shown on the map. So I will stop there for questions.
Um, thank you. Um, Michael, if you could put that map back up again, I have a question about that. Um, I, I just noticed what I think is a discrepancy between this map that you're showing on the screen and the map that is exhibit A. And there's a parcel of land that includes the old incinerator. And then there's a vacant lot uh, directly to the north of that. I think that's railroad property. That is not showing up on exhibit A. And I'm just wondering if you can confirm uh, the boundary of, of the new zoning, of that mixed use zoning area.
So did that switch over to the zoning map for you guys?
Well, that, yeah, that's the uh, that's what's on the website. So there's that is showing that railroad land as industrial. But then that little parcel that has the incinerator on does not have any designation on it.
It does not.
That's my question.
Yeah, this particular park, which is county-owned, um, was never zoned for some reason. It technically is annexed, but not zoned. So where, it is included in this um, this zoning proposal.
Well, that will retain, that will remain county property, but would be zone mixed use then in your proposal.
Yes, from Matthew's proposal. Yep. It still would be owned by the county. It would still be the incinerator. And any use would be grandfathered as long as they kept it there.
And that piece to the north, which is currently now labeled industrial, that would change to mixed use?
No, that one will remain industrial. I'll have to double check to make sure that that one is actually zoned, but I think it is. Um, so the mixed use would go around it. Just to the, the areas that are unzoned currently.
Okay. Alright. Um, I, I think that's my only question that I have. Anyone else have a question about this? No questions. Can I have a motion from the floor? City staff has proposed that this property be uh, designated as mixed use zoning category. Um, does anyone have a, would like to make a motion on that? Well, I'll make a motion. I'd like to move that we accept the city uh, planning staff's recommendation that this property become mixed use. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, Wendy.
Jim, can I interrupt? I have a question, I guess. So we're also talking about these other two parcels being industrial. Is that right?
Yes.
So we'll make it, we'll make a separate motion for that. I guess might be cleaner.
Oh, I see. Um, well, I can, in my motion, I'd be happy to amend my motion um, to uh, adapt the, uh, adopt the staff's suggestion that two parcels uh, to the east be designated in industrial. And the portion to the west be designated next use. Thanks for that. And we have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Blake. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright. We're flying. It is uh, quarter to 10 to 8. I promise that I'll get you guys out of here by 8. Uh, two more things on the uh, agenda. One is the recommendations on the sign regulation zoning text amendments. And then finally, a discussion on the design review orally zone. So I think.
To interrupt you, do we still have the Myers Lane zoning amendment too?
Yes, you are right. Let's do that one first. Alright, let's go to the Myers Lane. Zoning map amendment. Um, Mike Cardos, can you make a few statements on that?
Sure. So this is the property across, uh, across the Yellowstone from Mayor's Landing. Uh, it is county-owned property. It is basically just the bend in Myers uh, Road, Myers Lane where it goes back up the hill to the flats. Uh, the recommendation in this is public, uh, which makes sense. It's already attached to the parkland, uh, Meyer River View Trail. Uh, and the intent would be just to keep that trail, portions of which are already in this property, uh, protected under the public zoning. Again, it's, it's the county's land, so they can do with it as they wish. They don't need to um, follow the zoning regulations, but it makes sense if for some reason they sold it. Uh, the ETJ flum shows it as natural area or open space, which the public designation fits with. And other than that, that's pretty much Matthew's recommendation.
Michael, in the staff report, it is saying that these properties were an annexed into the city. That's correct. So they're in this. So they're in the city, but they're still owned by the county. And the county can do what they want with it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion? Now we just need to get that bridge built across. Um, okay, no discussion? It's a nice place to go walk. Um, okay, can I have a motion from the commission on whether to accept the staff's recommendation that we zone this public?
I'll put forth the motion that we accept the staff recommendation to make the Myers Lane zoning public.
Thank you, Deborah. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Wendy. We're good.
To be my role tonight.
Alright, gotta feel useful. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passed. Good, good, good. Alright. Um, well, can we? Uh, let's do the sign ordinance. Next, and that might be enough for tonight. Um, Michael, can you uh, talk about the proposed changes to the sign ordinance?
So I have Matthew's staff report, but I don't have the actual draft sign changes, or maybe I do. Maybe this is the code. There we go. Uh, so I'm going to share the code with you guys so you can see what Matthew has. Have you guys looked at this before? What have you done with this so far? Just so I can kind of see where you're at in the process.
Uh, I'm, I've looked at it before, but it's been a month and I did not have a chance to read it in the last few days. My, my recollection is that they were just trying to make the code uh, consistent with what actually exists in downtown uh, Livingston. So this just applies to the historic district. Um, and we've got some really nice uh, signs that protrude from buildings that are lit with neon and so on. And they wanted to make sure that those were allowed if, if somebody, some other business wanted to put up a similar type of sign. Uh, so I, that's my recollection as to the main intent behind these changes.
So you can see from here, this is section 30 dot 50, and I'm checking on 30 dot 50 to make sure that it is just the historic preservation district. So this looks like it's in sec, in article five of the city code, which is supplementary general regulation. So it looked like this would apply to all signs in the city. Regardless of their location. Uh, so this is more of a general, general change to sign requirements across the entire city. Uh, it looks like Matthew's changed or added some um, definitions that we didn't have before. Uh, actual business premises, backlit banner sign, door sign, halo lit, menu board, uh, neon sign. Um, off-premises sign, portable sign, projecting sign. Reader board, and then has deleted a bunch of the similar ones that talked about the same thing. Um, do you guys want to go through each of the definitions?
My recollection that when I read this a month ago is that it, 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 it just clarified and kind of separated out different types of signs. Uh, allowing them to be used in a more precise manner. So I, I'm comfortable with, with there. So, Michael, it looks like in uh, excuse me. Go ahead, Michael.
So without going through and reading all this, which feels like a lot, is there a way to get a higher level overview of what this captures? Or do we need to, because if if it's substantive, I don't feel comfortable weeding into all the detail of this.
So here's the front page of Matthew's staff report, which I think probably hits it. Uh, Jim was right. This was at the behest of the Historic Preservation Commission, but it's to the general sign origin. So Matthew's overview is basically the proposed zoning updates significantly update the signs regulations, including definitions, lighting standards, number of signs allowed, standards for specific sign types. Uh, there are also small updates to the administration of sign regulations, notably that master sign plans no longer require board of adjustment approval. And some other minor stuff as well. Uh, so it sounds like it's a fairly significant update to the sign section. Uh, and I would, I would recommend if you had not have the time to read through Matthew's staff report, that you guys wait until you can. Um, it's, signs are one of those things that don't seem like they're a big deal until they are. Uh, so but it is up to you as, as the zoning commission, what you'd like to do.
Thank you, Michael. Um, well, what do people think? Wendy, you're, you're being diligent here. I appreciate that. Do you want to postpone this till next month? Uh, Mike Cardos, do you have a sense of what our workload is going to be like next month? Well, we'll have to return to the, to the uh, school's property up on the hill. But beyond that, do you know of anything in the works?
Uh, so you guys have the school's property up in the hill. Um, I don't, have we worked through all the annexations now? I think so. They're still working their way through the city commission, but I think you've worked through all the annexations. Um, there probably will be some more changes to the zoning. Just the zoning ordinance. Uh, there's still some issues that need to be clarified in there. Um, things like we define boarding houses, but we don't list them as a use. Uh, which isn't very helpful. Uh, so I, generally, you have to work through the stuff that you already have on um, the agenda, but my guess is it will slow down significantly until we get a full-time planner.
Okay, alright. Well then, I, I personally am comfortable waiting till next month to, to resolve this. Is, was there any kind of hurry on the part of the Historic Preservation Commission to get this done right away, or can we?
I don't think so. I think they're just happy you're looking at it.
Okay, yeah, no, this is good stuff to work on. Okay, well, at that point, um, I, I think we're done with business. I would like to make one proposal uh, for your consideration. Uh, as it turns out, this school board meetings and hour meetings are on the same day every month. So the school board was not able to attend our session today. And I was wondering, uh, because that's such a my important topic to deal with that 20 acres up there, whether next month we might shift or meeting date, say from Tuesday of the week to Thursday of the week, so that we could interact more with the school board. I don't have any problem with that. Alright, would you, folks like to look at your calendars and look at, let's, let's see when uh, we're talking.
That works for me.
Okay, second Tuesday is the 12th and the Thursday.
10th of April?
14th of April. Can we schedule our meeting for next month on the 14th of April? Just this one time and then we'll go back to Tuesday after that.
I can't do that, but don't. If you want to go ahead, that's fine.
Ah, you can't make, is there any other day that would work for you? Or are you going to be out of town?
No, I just have a commitment that night.
Okay.
Uh, the 12th. Um, let's see, the week prior, I cannot.
What about the 13th?
That would probably work.
Anyone else?
Is there a conservation board meeting that night? Do we know yet?
I don't know.
I don't either. That is held on the other Michael DeChelis's calendar, but I'm not actually sure it's a real meeting or not.
Okay. I have listed the 19th for conservation board, but this is maybe old, it may not be accurate. That's the third Tuesday of the month. I don't know when they normally meet.
They typically meet on Wednesdays, but it, I wouldn't say it's been typical.
Okay, alright. Well, I would make a motion then that we move April's meeting to the 13th. Uh, just for one time. And, and then I'll do some outreach to the school board.
And Michael, it does look like the conservation board meeting is on the 13th. At least that's what's on the city calendar.
Okay, let's not do that. Um, any other suggestions?
What, what time is the school board meeting?
I think it's about the same time.
So, and you're, you're just looking to give them some time to discuss their position before they speak with us? Is that what your hope is?
Well, I I think Todd did a good job in the city, but they're kind of a big diverse group of people. And I thought was just that they need to think about this. They need to hear from the community. They need to represent themselves to the community. Uh, I know the people that spoke tonight were feeling pretty threatened, some of them, by big changes. And from my meeting this morning, I didn't get any sense that there's anything imminent going on or anything that they would want to do that would be against the interests of the community. So they're very, seem to be quite cooperative in terms of their intent. And it just seemed to me that if a, a few of those people could be at the meeting to answer any kind of questions.
Well, if I, I mean, if, if I was Todd, I'd be going back to the drawing board and sharing feedback and coming back with a proposal they're comfortable with. You know, sending through the process.
Yeah, well, the big process, the master plan or anything they want to do on that property is, is years out. So we're purely looking at what zoning designation.
Can they do a PUD? Can they do a PUD with, they can do a PUD within. Any type of zoning designation, correct?
We don't have PUDs.
Or what's your equivalent of a plan unit development?
Mixed use, they can pretty much do anything inside a mixed use. Or highway commercial for that matter.
Is there any precedent for splitting zoning? On a, like. Like, is there any way they could do half this and half that?
So again, we probably shouldn't be talking about that issue since we're done with it. And I would also caution against having them answer questions in the meeting. Because that's what they need to do in their own public meetings, not in our public meetings.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think they need to go back to the drawing bar, board on what the feedback they took and come up with a plan and probably. I would almost think that's probably not going to happen next month. That's, that's a much bigger, lengthier conversation.
Right. And really, all they, all they need to provide you is their request for the zone. That's it. Right? So, and then it's up to you to decide what level of zoning you are comfortable recommending to the city commission. I mean, there isn't, we, it doesn't really matter if they're planning on swapping ball fields or whatever, what they're planning on doing. It's just what are we willing to allow to be developed there, whether or not the school owns it? So I don't think you're going to get a lot more information out of the school as far as that goes. I mean, really, they can just say, we'd like it to be our three. We'd like it to be mixed use. We would like it to be our two. Please decide between those threes. And I can tell you from a staff perspective, we would not recommend mixed use. That, that is, if you calculated the number of units that could go in under mixed use. Zoning up there, it's. It's apocalyptic, like it's, it's a lot. If you did all 60 foot buildings with no setbacks, right? So really, you just, you just need to decide how much density you think should be allowed in that area. And once you decide that, then it's, it's a straightforward decision on what zone to put in there. Or you can decide that we don't want to decide this now and zone it public, and any developer would have to come back for a rezone. Any of those would be appropriate.
Well, my question is, if I was in Todd's position representing the school, I'd be like. If we put this to a vote right now, I would say it was, it's not going to be successful. So. I mean, I don't, I, I guess, is it worthwhile having a conversation with him on how? If he's going to come back with the same proposal, or if he's going to change it? Withdraw this request and come back with something different.
Well, he can't come back with anything different except our two.
Well, that's something different than what he just came back with. But what he had on the agenda.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any, the, the decision of that is up to you guys. It's really, they just ask for what they want.
Well, no, that's what I'm trying to say. Right now, he's asking for our three. So we want to know, is he coming back to continue to ask for our three, or is he going to change his mind and ask for our two?
We won't know unless they change their ask.
I know, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. How will we know that? Is, can someone have a conversation with him? Or do we just wait until, I don't know, never mind?
So I, I guess the, the real answer to that is. Not really our issue. They need to decide whether or not they want to change their mind. Lynn has already sent a request. If they want to change that request, they can. But we're not here to lobby them to change anything, or suggest they change anything, or even imply they should change anything. That, that is completely up to them.
I understand that.
Okay, well, based on that, is it worthwhile changing our meeting? I think, I think maybe I'll withdraw my suggestion and we'll just stay with our standard meeting date. And then if the school board wants to participate or something or other. We can work out something. Todd can come again or something.
Well, and if it's, if it's really important to them, they can always hold a special meeting. They have the option to have that meeting ahead of time if they want.
Do you guys think that Todd understood that they have this time to come back to us with a new zoning designation? That there's like a time, there's like a clock ticking on this? And like has a sense of urgency on it?
That's what I'm trying to get at here is having some type of communication. So he's on the same page of what's expected of.
Yeah, totally.
I, I think I, I tried to mention that a couple of times, that we've got one more meeting in which to make a decision. But I think you're probably right. Maybe I should just send a note to, to Lynn. Letting her know that. So it's in writing. That if they would want to make any kind of modification to their request, we'll need it in the next couple of weeks.
So if you guys as a board want to communicate something to the school, the easiest way is through staff. Okay, right. Because we're not, I don't preside over this. I don't make any decisions over this. So I can have conversations with school staff. And that doesn't violate any open meeting laws. It doesn't. There's, because I'm not a decision maker.
So are you, are you? Are you staff in this case?
I am staff.
With Matthew being gone?
Yep, I'm staff. That's what I do. So if you guys would like me to, to talk to the school, I can certainly talk to Lynn and say. Hey, this is where we are in the process and these are your options in the process.
I think it just make sure she's clear, but I think that's worth doing. Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're done.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. That was a.
Thanks for the lasting public.
Exactly, I know. Good job, Amanda and Jonathan and Josh.
And thank you, Michael.
I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Brandon's a guy, but yeah.
It's my wife's computer.
All right.